Innovators in L.A.'s building boom. Gil Reyes has details from downtown. Gil?
Yes, Yana, city officials say this inspection case management system has been around for about a year now and is helping to speed up around 130 building projects throughout the city of Los Angeles, including the massive Wilshire Grand Tower you see right behind me. Once completed, it will be the tallest building west of the Mississippi at 1,100 feet tall.
On behalf of the fire department, accept this, Chief. Thank you.
This year's Civic Innovation Awards are given to several city agencies, simplifying the construction inspection process.
And what did it cost us? Absolutely nothing, just better management.
City leaders say the inspection case management system speeds up construction by up to 40%. Before it launched a little over a year ago, problems like fire and building hazards would require multiple calls to multiple inspectors.
Now you have one coordinator who actually coordinates all those inspections for you. And if there's any troubleshooting that's necessary, that coordinator in effect will troubleshoot the project with all these inspectors rather than you going to each of them individually.
David Lara of the Department of Building and Safety says 95% of projects using this system are on schedule. Before it launched, the number was 20%. Chris Martin from the Wilshire Grand Tower project says his skyscraper will open on time in March 2017. At 1,100 feet, Wilshire Grand will be the tallest building in the western United States.
This is phenomenal. It takes real teamwork from the development community, building and safety, fire department, all the agencies. And we are going to hit that date, and that is unheard of.
But not everyone is cheering. The AIDS Healthcare Foundation is pursuing a ballot measure to delay construction of L.A. high-rises. The group says the buildings are squeezing out the poor. The mayor disagrees.
We need more units at every level, and we need to subsidize more for low-income residents of Los Angeles. But a building moratorium won't help us make the city more affordable. What we need to do is, I hope people will support, whether it's the AIDS Healthcare Foundation or others, my linkage fee proposal to say when you build something, you should put some money aside for affordable units.
The sky's the limit as L.A.'s building boom continues. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The new system is staffed by members of the DWP, City Fire Department, and the Department of Building and Safety. While the number of women contractors and women in power positions in L.A. is growing, one workshop and panel put on by Mayor Garcetti's office and several women's organizations aims to help female entrepreneurs become certified to work the big city contracts. Anna Marcos explains.
Think your female-owned business is too small or too far out to ride with the big city honchos and corporations? Think again.
That you just never know what corporations may be looking for. I remember getting a call from a corporation asking me for a company or a business that was able to produce worms.
This panel called "Should You Become Certified as a Women-Owned Business in Los Angeles" gives female entrepreneurs free help on how to compete and get certified for those big city contracts.
I know that certainly it's something that I need to have to make me more competitive as I move forward.
It was great to hear them say, here are the steps, here's what you do, here's what's important.
The business climate here has never been better for women. Mayor Eric Garcetti's administration is pushing to get more women involved in city contracts and in city positions.
We recognize that appointing women to commissions and key commission appointments is critical to how we're actually going to close a lot of the leadership gaps that we have.
Among all 41 boards and commissions in the city, there are a lot, women now hold 54% of all appointed positions.
We stand for women's empowerment, women's development, women's leadership, and entrepreneurial skill building.
So the motto seems to be, go out there and make some worms or something, and get into business with the big guys. These ladies are ready to show you how. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
If you want to find out more, contact Claire Berryman at the city's Office of Contract Compliance, just dial 311. While African-American leaders are honored for expanding opportunities for minority-owned businesses, Gil Reyes reports from a special ceremony at the Downtown Marriott.
It's my great pleasure to present you with a chairman's award. Deborah Flint, ladies and gentlemen.
L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti presents one of the night's biggest awards to the head of Los Angeles World Airports. They're the operators of LAX.
Our dedication to inclusion of local, small, and diverse business is such a paramount goal and principle.
LAWA Executive Director Deborah Flint is overseeing an $8.5 billion renovation at the airport, one that's said to emphasize local hiring and inclusion of more small minority-owned businesses. For that, she's honored at this year's Greater Los Angeles African-American Chamber of Commerce Dinner in downtown. Other awardees include Inglewood Mayor James Butts. He's instrumental in bringing Rams football back to Los Angeles County. Also honored is Phil Washington, the CEO of Metro's Rail and Bus Systems, hopes to score big by teaming with LAWA to build more transportation options to LAX. LAWA's Deborah Flint calls this a winning game plan. She comes to us from the Bay Area.
We still love our Golden State Warriors because they do believe in strength in numbers. There's strength in numbers in this room tonight, and I love L.A.
Well, at least they agree on transportation upgrades and possibly cheering on the Rams when they get here. Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Other honorees of the night included DWP Board Member William Funderburke and South Coast Air Quality Management Chairman William Burke. While Harry Potter fans prepare for magic, as Universal Studios in Hollywood unveils its new Wizarding World of Harry Potter attraction, Anna Marcos takes us there.
The lights go up to reveal a place of magic, as the Wizarding World of Harry Potter and its Hogwarts School of Witchcraft makes its grand debut at Universal Studios. The attraction is based on the Harry Potter books and movies. Now city leaders hope Harry Potter and his Gryffindors, Hufflepuffs, Ravenclaws, and Slytherins cast a spell on Angelinos and tourists alike.
Incendio!
And there were plenty of magic spells going around as celebrities and stars of the Harry Potter movies walked the red carpet.
My favorite is Win Cardium Leviosa, which is the charm for levitation.
You know, this is phenomenal for Los Angeles. We had a record number of visitors last year, 45.5 million people. That means money spent in our economy, and we think as much as a million more people will come simply because of this one attraction.
The Wizarding World of Harry Potter has already drawn record crowds in Osaka, Japan, and Orlando, Florida, where it opened earlier.
You know, I'm not surprised. I mean, Harry Potter is universally loved by millions and millions of people around the world.
I don't think there's like a limit to what, how far Harry Potter can go, because I think people just love it.
So when my kids need a Harry Potter fix, we don't have to go to Osaka or Orlando. It's a much closer drive from La Cuenada.
Anywhere else, it's a roller coaster. Here it's called the Flight of the Hippogriff, after a magical flying creature in the Harry Potter movies. So drink your witch's brew, I mean butter beer, and hang on for a magical journey. Oh, and a magic light show doesn't hurt. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Universal Studios, by the way, has had a makeover with 75% new attractions, including a soon-to-open Walking Dead attraction. While April is Volunteer Appreciation Month, and the LAPD is making a big push to attract more reserve officers, Gil Reyes has part one of a special volunteer series on how the department is switching its training schedule to accommodate and recruit one specific community.
The Sabbath. It's the holiest day of the week for the Jewish faith, a time for family. It also means no driving, no working, and no classes that day for Orthodox Jews interested in volunteer police training. The LAPD's West Bureau has the largest concentration of Orthodox Jews in Los Angeles.
You have the La Brea area, you have the Pico Robertson area, where you just have a very established, large community with dozens of temples. And this was a good opportunity to get them involved where they, until right now, they could not get involved.
Chaplain Newman says what has hindered recruitment of Jewish reserve officers in the past is that training days typically fall on Saturdays. Saturday is the Jewish Sabbath, so that means that those training days are out for many of the faithful. So why not switch training days to Sundays instead?
And so we're going to change that so we can embrace the entire community of Los Angeles and get a very, very significant increase in our reserves.
LAPD Chief Charlie Beck announces the launch of the city's first all-Jewish Reserve Academy class. Instruction will take place on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Sundays instead of traditional Saturdays. The department is trying to boost the number of reserve officers. Currently, it has around 400 reserves. The goal is 2,000.
Yes, there is a slight rise in crime, and certainly one of the things that we need is more people out on patrol. And this is one of the ways the department believes that it can reduce crime.
LAPD reservists are non-paid, part-time, sworn officers. They oftentimes volunteer in between the real jobs. They also carry guns and in uniform. The average person cannot tell the difference between them and full-time officers. The Reserve Corps was created during World War II, when many LAPD officers went off to war, leaving job vacancies back here at home. Today, reserves are required to volunteer at least 16 hours a month. They also undergo the same strict background checks, polygraph tests, and physical exams as full-time officers. At the LAPD Wilshire Station, members of the Jewish faith fill the room on this first day of orientation. Chaplain Newman had spread the message on Facebook that training days were switching, and the response has been positive.
I'm humbled. I feel as the room gets fuller and fuller, I keep feeling smaller and smaller.
Attorney Ari Friedman says switching days to Sundays means he and others in his congregation can finally volunteer after years of thinking about it.
We don't get into the car, we don't make phone calls, we don't turn lights on on Sabbath. So for Sunday, it's an option.
But the LAPD admits the reserve program is not for everyone. Only one out of every 100 applicants makes it through training. Also a possible hindrance for Jewish men, the LAPD does not allow beards for safety reasons. Mark Friedman would have to stop growing his.
I would have to think it over because it is for some religious reasons, and I would have to weigh, discuss it with my wife, maybe with my rabbis.
But for others in the room...
You know, I can speak for the Jewish community. There's a concept of Tikun Olam, which is making your world a better place. And this is, how can you make your world a better place than being out there in your own community and keeping your own community safe?
From the Jewish communities surrounding the LAPD's West Bureau, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The LAPD plans to target other communities to build its reserve force to 2,000 officer-strong. While the North Hollywood community came out in full force recently to brave the shave and make a bold statement in support of some very brave kids. Amir Zargar is taking the plunge and shaving his thick head of hair. He says it's all worth it as he bids farewell to his long, lush mane.
It's for a good cause, and to be honest, I don't really need the hair. I think donating the hair to someone who can use it for, use it better, someone with cancer, and I think that's, it's a good cause.
Amir is one of several dozen community members who came out to get their heads shaven to benefit the St. Baldry's Foundation, a volunteer organization that raises funds for children's cancer research.
I just wanted to support kids that have cancer.
Matthew and his dad Greg, who's an LAFD firefighter, also got the bald treatment. Greg says they make it a family tradition.
This is a worthwhile cause, and every year, me and my son Matthew, we come here, we participate, and we have a great time.
The 14th annual event, which took place at Fire Station 89 in North Hollywood, is put on each year by members of the Los Angeles Fire and Police Departments. And even Police Chief Charlie Beck shaved a few heads.
It's a very, very tough thing for a family to have a young person struck with cancer, and to get a little, a little hope and a little sunshine in that time is a great thing.
St. Baldry's has put on this event for the past 14 years all across the country. This year, the foundation has reached a milestone, surpassing the $1 million mark in donations, which will help provide medical advancements in childhood cancer research.
The St. Baldry's, besides the U.S. government, is the second-largest source of funding for childhood cancer research, and that's why it's so important for us to come out here and just make a difference in children's lives.
St. Baldry's hopes to continue the tradition, providing hope and one day a cure for all children's cancer. Well, it's official. California Governor Jerry Brown signs legislation to gradually raise the minimum wage. A couple of community members get special recognition for giving back, and the Runyon Canyon hiking trail is now closed, but there are some options for hikers. All these stories in City Beat. In front of a crowd of legislators, union leaders, and workers who've been fighting for increased salaries, California Governor Jerry Brown signed legislation in downtown L.A. that will raise the state's minimum wage to $15 an hour by 2022. Brown, during a ceremony at the Ronald Reagan State Building, said the passage of SB 3 doesn't mark the end of the struggle for livable wages, but it's a big step in the right direction.
Economically, minimum wages may not make sense, but morally and socially and politically, they make every sense because it binds the community together and makes sure that parents can take care of their kids in a much more satisfactory way.
L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti issued a statement applauding the move, saying California leads the nation once again. Millions of Californians can now reach the American dream. Uber recently held its first Work on Demand event at Crenshaw United Methodist Church as part of its 12-month effort to recruit thousands of drivers from L.A. District 8 Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson was on hand to show his support. One Uber driver said working for the company has not only helped him financially, but...
You know, it's not a grind, like you get a second job and you have to change your mindset to go from one job to the next. For me, it doesn't, it doesn't do that. Just get in the car, press a button, and do what I have to do.
The Board of Public Works recently recognized a couple of neighborhood council clean-street heroes for their exceptional leadership, support, and engagement with community cleanups. One college student was chosen for her cleanup efforts in Wilmington.
The award is just motivation, motivation to keep going, motivation to keep doing cleanups, to keep working in the community and empowering people to create change.
The popular hiking trail Runyon Canyon is now officially closed until July 31st to accommodate repair work on a roughly one-mile stretch of a six-inch Department of Water and Power water pipe. In the meantime, hikers can use other nearby trails, including Franklin or Frim and Canyon Parks, Hollywood Reservoir, or Willacre Park. Traditional and fine art paintings go on display for the month of April, help celebrate Record Store Day as it shines the spotlight on independent record stores across the country, and L.A. street artists help transform a neighborhood alley into an art gallery. All this and this week's Things to Do. The California Art Club will present its 105th Annual Gold Medal Exhibition at the Autry Museum of the American West. The display of more than 200 contemporary to traditional fine art paintings and sculptures pays tribute to the pioneering artists who founded the organization in 1909 and inspired California Impressionism, the first artistic movement to be defined as uniquely Californian. The exhibiting artists employ classical fine art techniques to create works that push the boundaries and explore topical imagery and messages. The exhibition runs from April 3rd to the 24th at the Autry Museum located at 4,700 Western Heritage Way. For more, visit californiaartclub.org. Record Store Day is an annual event founded in 2007, held on the third Saturday of April each year to celebrate the culture of the independently-owned record store. The day brings together fans, artists, and thousands of independent record stores across the world. A number of records are pressed specifically for Record Store Day and are only distributed to shops participating in the event. This year, Record Store Day is on Saturday, April 16th. To find out which stores near you are participating, visit recordstoreday.com. Over 80 murals canvass the alleyways, stairways, dumpsters, gated fences, and garage doors of historic Filipino town. Known as the Gaba Arts District, this dynamic neighborhood has attracted emerging and well-known street artists from across Los Angeles and around the world. Join in as the tour treks through the alleys of the Gaba Arts District with curator and alley project founder Jason Ostro. Enjoy a walking tour and meet several of the artists, learn more about the history of the project, and discover how it's transformed the community. The tour takes place on April 16th at the Gaba Gallery located at 3126 Beverly Boulevard. For details, visit atlasobscura.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain from all of us here at L.A. this week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week. To have a career where I can achieve my best, where every day is different, where lifelong friendships are made, where I'm saving lives and inspiring others. My name is Mackenzie Vandergeist and I am a Los Angeles firefighter.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Today is Friday, April 15th. I want to welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and all is welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Ilbonin, Buscaino, Fentis, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 12 members in a quorum for President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rue moves. Mr. Bloomingfield seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves. Mr. Price seconds. That brings us where?
Request to continue. Item I, 1E-GI, and L to May 13th, 2016, and item 1N to May 3rd. The Department also recommends that item 1C, D, and J be received and filed in as much as liens are paid in full, 1F to be received and filed in as much as the property is owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and is exempt from lien processing, and finally 1O to be received and filed in as much as the property is owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and to reduce the lien amount to $442.
So without objection, that'll be the order. Continue, please.
Item number 1 is an item notice for a public hearing, and Mr. President, there are cards on that.
So let's hold item number 1. Let's move to the next set of items.
Items 2 through 5 are items for which public hearings have been held. Mr. President, the committee report for item number 5 has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Then, members, any specials? I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, let's move on to the... Item 5, forthwith. Let us continue.
Mr. President, items 6 to 12 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards on these items?
Mr. President, there are cards on 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12.
Okay, Mr. Corretts.
Yes, on item 9, I'd just like to have us amend the date of the event.
Hold on a second, Mr. Corretts. Can we have some quiet, please?
Shhh. On item 9, I'd like to amend the date of the event to June 8th, 2016.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order on that item. So again, that brings us where, Madam Clerk? Do we have any of those items remaining that we can vote on?
No, sir. There are cards on all of them.
So that brings us where?
That brings council to either... Our public comment on items, not on the special.
Okay, so it looks like we need to work out some bugs. We're having some problems with our communications, our sound system, so if IT could work on that. I think we'll go to presentations at this time, but, Mr... Before we do that, Mr. Bonin?
Item 4, please.
Item 4?
Yeah.
Okay, forthwith, at Mr. Bonin's request. Mr. Rue, you have a very important presentation. Would you like to start us off?
Let me get the rest of the folks. Tell Alex all of them. Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Today, I'm honored to recognize Ambassador Kim Hyung-Myeon, the Consul General from the Republic of Korea, to Los Angeles City Council. Ambassador Kim is a well-respected leader with decades of experience in diplomatic service in the Korean and international community. Ambassador Kim began his tenure in Los Angeles in April 2014, and has served the southwest region's 600,000-strong Korean-American community, the largest concentration of ethnic Koreans in the United States. He previously held diplomatic and consular and ambassadorial posts in Iraq, Japan, Netherlands, Vietnam, and the United States. Ambassador Kim is set to retire by the end of this year. I have a strong kinship with the ambassador. We met two years ago at his very first event as Consul General to Los Angeles. Ambassador Kim is warm, caring, genuine, and most importantly, he was eager to strengthen our two nations' bonds and support Los Angeles. And I remember on my first meeting, we had a discussion, we had a talk, and I remember telling him that I really don't like getting to know Consul Generals. And he said, "Why?" And I said, "By the time we build a friendship and we get to know each other, you leave." Because of the two-year term that every Consuls have. And, but having met and known, and moreover, you know, having met and known many Korean Consul Generals to L.A., I have to say Ambassador Kim is by far the most effective. And while I'm saddened that he's retiring, I am honored to recognize Ambassador Kim for this, for his more, for this morning, for his years of service, and I don't regret the fact that we got to know each other. And, and his, and his efforts for bringing our two nations together, and his passion for further sharing our culture, values, and beliefs is insurmountable. So please help me welcome Ambassador Kim Hyung-Myeon.
Ambassador, before you begin, sir, I just want to say that you are a class act. You did phenomenal work when you were here. My colleague, Mr. Rue, is absolutely correct. Two years is just not enough, enough time. It seems like you, you get here, you put together a good team, you're getting things done, and then we have to say goodbye. But we do thank you for your service. We wish you well in the future, and it was an honor to work with you over the past couple of years. And, members, I want to ask again that we give Ambassador Kim another round of applause. He truly deserves it.
Good morning, and a very happy Friday to you all. Thank you, Council President Hau Wesson and Councilman Dave Doo for arranging this lovely ceremony and for congratulating me, appreciating me this morning with warm words. It's my distinct honor to stand before the Los Angeles City Council and the citizens of the best city in the world. I've been quite fortunate to have served as Consul General in Los Angeles, home to the largest and most dynamic community of Koreans outside Korea. And I have been privileged to witness Korean-American voices being heard loud and clear in the mainstream. The successful election of Councilman Dave Doo is a prime example of this, and he is not alone. Korean-Americans have been making impressive strides in all of years, and I feel blessed to have been in L.A. during this exciting time, when the hard work and dedication of so many has paid off. Indeed, it has been a spectacular couple of years for Korean-Americans, and I expect that with each year, their representation will grow more and more substantial. L.A. really is a special place. It is the global village that connects Asia not only with the USA, but it is also gateway to Central and South America and Canada. It brings people from all of the world together. Every culture contributes to the beautiful mosaic that is L.A., and this diversity is what makes L.A. great. It is what makes America great. I must say, my return to Seoul is bittersweet. You get spoiled living in L.A., sunny skies almost every day, the ocean, the mountains, in and out, you can really get used to this place. My consolation is that I am not really leaving L.A., because, as you may know, I'm not leaving, because L.A. is considered a special district of Seoul. So even though I might be 6,000 miles across the Pacific, we'll always be neighbors. I am very pleased to share that my good friend, Ambassador Lee Gichul, will be my successor. He's a very enthusiastic and able man. I know he will continue to foster the L.A.-Korea partnership, and I am certain you will, you all will show him the same support and kindness you welcomed me with. I can assure you that I will return to the City of Angels with every opportunity I have, and when I am away, I'll promote Los, I will promote L.A. with the fervor and grit of a true Angelino. Thank you very much. 감사합니다.
Mr. President, I especially want to thank you for accommodating this presentation at the last minute. We knew the Consul General was leaving, but he is such a humble man that he did not let anyone know till about a week or two ago, which is why we came and asked for your office very late. But thank you so much for accommodating, and, and even though it was such short notice that we put this together, we have representatives from, from the various Korean-American organizations, from Samjae Miro organization, Korean American Chamber, Korean Senior Association, and everyone who came at the last minute to thank the Consul General. 그리고 대단히 우리, 우리 영석아님 가니까 너무 섭섭합니다. 특별히 저는 2년 전에 저는 몇년 전에부터 다시 영석아님들하고 안 친해진다고 마인드를 셋했어요. 왜냐면 친해지면은 너무 갈때 섭섭해서 친해지기 싫었는데 우리 김영석아님은 너무나 친절하시고 너무나 아무 데나 가도 다 계시고 그래서 너무나 알기 싫어도 we have to get to know each other. 그래서 너무 감사하고요. 그리고 너무나 좋으신 분이고 너무 섭섭합니다. 그런데 말씀 대신으로 L.A. 하고 서울이 we're friends, we're partners. 그러니까 떠나신다고 생각 안 할게요. 계속 놀러 오시고 계속 오시고. So our two communities could be built stronger and stronger relationships. 감사합니다. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to present this proclamation to thank the Consul General of South Korea. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. On behalf of the City of Los Angeles, on behalf of the City Council, I'd like to present this proclamation to thank the Consul General of South Korea. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
We now have a special presentation by Mr. Wesson, as soon as he's done with the greeting line. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and, and, and members. Today is one of those bittersweet type of days in the sense that I get to recognize a dear lady that I've known and loved for a long time, for all of, for her friendship, number one, to myself and my family, get a chance to highlight some of the great things that she's done for our community and our city, but it is bittersweet in that she will be moving back to where it all began, which is right outside of Atlanta, Georgia. Ladies and gentlemen, I have to my right a young lady by the name of Betty Bryant. Betty, I can't even remember exactly how long we've known each other. I believe my mother may have met Betty before I met Betty. She has been, from a personal perspective, any thing that I have ever attempted to do, any office that I may have run for, Betty has always been one of the first supporters at my side, an individual that I would never even have to call, you just look up and she's there. She was part of an organization called Women for Wesson that have supported me for the past 20, 20 years. Again, like I said, she was a close, personal friend with my mother and with my wife. She's an individual that you never have to ask to do anything. She just does it on her own. She does it because there's a need that, that it be done. There is no job too big or too small for Betty. Betty just believes in getting things done, be it from serving hundreds of people's food at one of the function that I may have had, to coordinating one of our most successful national night outs. She's been an active member of the Mid-City Neighborhood Council for many, many years. She has recently, for the past few years, been working very hard with another friend of ours, a young man by the name of...
The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and, 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 and members. Today is one of those bitter-sweet type of, of, of days in the sense that I get to recognize a, a dear lady that I've known and loved for a long time, for all of, for, for her friendship, number one, to myself and my family. Get a chance to highlight some of the great things that she's done for our community and our city. But it is bittersweet in that she will be moving back to where it all began, which is right outside of Atlanta, Georgia. Ladies and gentlemen, I, I, I have to my right a young lady by the name of Betty Bryant. Betty, I, I can't even remember exactly how long we've known each other. I believe my mother may have met Betty before I met Betty. She has been, from a personal perspective, any thing that I have ever attempted to do, any office that I may have run for, Betty has always been one of the first supporters at my side, an individual that I would never even have to call, you just look up and she's there. She was part of an organization called Women for Wesson that have supported me for the past twenty, twenty years. Again, like I said, she was a close, personal friend with my mother and with my wife. She's an individual that you never have to ask to do anything. She just does it on her own. She does it because there's a need that, that, that it be done. There is no job too big or too small for Betty. Betty just believes in getting things done, be it from serving hundreds of people's food at one of the functions that I may have had, to coordinating one of our most successful National Night Outs. She's been an active member of the Mid-City Neighborhood Council for many, many years. She has recently, for the past few years, been very, working very hard with another friend of ours, a young man by the name of Alan De Castro, to help give a facelift to property in the Lemur Park area. It's just gonna be, you, you get so used to somebody that you believe they're always gonna be there. And then when you hear that they're not, you know, I, I, I don't know if I'm ready to accept that, that reality as yet. Now, I do want to say this, just because she's nice and sweet and all of that, that doesn't mean that she did not drive me crazy for the past 15 years or so. And whenever I would receive a call from her, I would do the very best that I could to deliver the services that she wanted, she needed, and that she deserved. So it is with the utmost respect that I just want to give you a pat on the back, an "atta girl," an "atta lady," an "atta boy," just to thank you, not just for myself personally, but from the residents of the 10th District and the Victoria Circle in particular. Ladies and gentlemen, please do me a favor, and let's give my dear friend one heck of a L.A. send-off, Betty Bryant.
Good morning. And I want to thank Council President for those great words. I want to say thank you to the City Council for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I want to say, L.A. has been wonderful for me. When I came here in 1978, um, my eyes were open, I was ready to experience new things, and I got involved into a lot of activities. As he mentioned, Mid-City Neighborhood Council, I was also a director on the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. I, as he mentioned, working in Lemur Park with Alan to help bring new things, new ideas, and changes into Lemur Park. But my main thing was for an advocate for the community and for seniors. As I got my degree from Mount, uh, Mount St. Mary's College in Gerontology and Sociology, so I, my heart was with seniors, but really in working with the community. And I have some people behind me, especially my neighbor who I met, because we have both the same addresses in Victoria Park. And we met, and I got her to, in the mornings at 6 o'clock, to go out and help me walk the streets, pull down signs, keep things clean. Also, my neighbor Seda, who helped me with National Night Out, to organize, to keep the community clean. And a lot of business people, as in reaching out, who have sponsored all my activities as with the National Night Out, special cleanups and everything. And then behind me, my two colleagues, as on the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, we worked together. And hopefully, Council will remember Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, small owners, like me, that was, that had an op, a great opportunity in the City of Los Angeles to own property and be a pro-housing provider. So please, remember you're voting. Think about housing. And thank you so much.
And also, I should mention that, you know, Betty would organize, remember, we had the pancake breakfast in the middle of the street, we closed the street down, all of the neighbors came. In fact, Betty was the one that introduced me to Jack Humphreyville's brother, who refers to himself as the good Humphreyville. So anyway, Betty, it's, uh, I would like to present this to you as just a token of our appreciation for all that you've done for our great city. And also, I have another certificate of appreciation from our City Attorney's Office, signed by Mike Fuer. So ladies and gentlemen, do me a favor, and let's give Betty another round of applause. And Betty, thank you so much.
And we've got a speaker on the queue, Mr. President. We've got, we've got Mr. Price on the queue. And I think we need to add to the City Attorney's budget some frames. We'll go ahead and do that next year's budget. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just celebrate Betty Bryant and her activism, her involvement in the community. And, Mr. President, she wasn't only active in the 10th. You know, she, she was, I, I recognized her as a she-wrote. As a matter of fact, when I was in the Senate, in the 26th District. And so, like a grateful community, Betty, we're going to miss you, we certainly appreciate your, your contributions, your enthusiasm, your excitement, your professionalism, and always working for the people. And so, we miss you, we love you, keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, thank you. Let's give another round of applause. All right. All right, we're gonna go ahead and turn our attention to the regular agenda, and we'll start off with item six, I believe. And to do that, I'll turn it over to Joe Buscagno for a special introduction.
President, right for. It gives me great honor, colleagues, to welcome to the City of Los Angeles in the John Ferraro Chambers, Marta Pascal. She's a member of the Catalan Parliament in Spain since night, since May 2013. She's a spokesperson of her parliamentary group in Foreign Affairs and Cooperation Committee, and also chair, is a member of the Youth Committee in Spain. And she's also a member of the Education and Universities Committee. She's here through the Marshall Memorial Fellowship, traveling the United States, have already visited parts of East Coast, Boston, Washington, and then she went over to Tennessee. And welcome, Madam Pascal. And we want to offer you a warm welcome to the City of Los Angeles, and brought to us by David Roberts, my planning director, who is also a former Marshall Fellow as well. So, welcome and enjoy your stay here in Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
All right, we're gonna take a block of the agenda. We're gonna go ahead and take items 1, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. Once again, 1, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. And first, on item 1, we have Ziggy.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Ziggy Cruz. I'm with H&amp;NTV. On your item 1, you have a property listed as 5444 West Monroe Street. I'd like to bring to your attention that this gentleman has been asking Councilmember Oferl, who I don't even see in the council chambers at this point, to work with him on this. We've been told that this item was supposed to be received and filed today, but I'm not sure what that really means. Can this lien come back and bite them in the buttocks? Or is this a done and done, over with deal? I see that many of you are really paying attention right now. I'm sorry to say that. I see City Attorney's paying attention. Thank you, Mr. Kurets, for looking at me this time. There are many of you not in your seats. These are property owners who are fighting to protect their properties. Mr. Torres has been before you several times now. Mr. Oferl, I would like to see you here. Maybe we can work something out. You have an item coming up in the same kind of thing next week. You're absorbing costs, or is proposed to absorb the cost to install or to make an illegally installed gate legal. How is that fair when you have one property owner fighting to protect their family by having an overheight fence, which, by the way, has prevented several times a break-in? And you have a different type of person who maybe, I don't know, did something right to you guys and decided, I'm gonna start a process, I'm gonna get signatures, but the signatures lately can't be found? And then you say, well, we're just gonna put it on a fast track, we have them on the agenda next week, and we're just gonna absorb the costs, and that's the end to that. In the meantime, this is a private property here at stake while this other gentleman has closed up a public road. How can that happen? You have government codes, you have vehicle codes, uphold the law, and work with the community that really needs your help. And that is right now, Mr. Torres. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. The next speaker is Jose Torres? Trying to read the writing, I apologize, but Jose, come on. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jose Torres. Been living the, uh, the address for, uh, since 1990, we, we acquired the property. And we've been fighting, uh, with, uh, with the departments for almost six years, and I see a lot of injustice in, in this process, because I saw that you guys are waving the fist to people who closed the street. I am trying to protect my family, and I will be continuing to doing that. So let me, let me be clear on that, because I love my family, and I love my city. But you guys have to work it out with me, and I'm trying to, yes, to make a decent living in here. So let me tell you one thing, it's very important, in Hollywood, and yes, a little street is not just one block. We are seven different languages, and we live in peace and in harmony. So you guys need to keep that kind of things in our diversity, in our city. So please, help me out to wait and postpone this item so we can have time with my family to, uh, to put everything, anything together. I'm trying to work with Mr. Oferl, he promised me in the April the 1st that we're going to meet. He just made me a phone call, and he promised to get back to me, and I didn't hear from him. So you guys have the authority to do something. There's a lot of injustice in here. So I would like to hear that you guys at least going to do something for me and my family. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Emilio Vega?
Good morning. My name is Emilio Vega. I've been following up this case with Mr. Torres. I wrote a letter, as I mentioned before, I wrote a letter to those persons who should follow up that motion that they have about this property, and they just been neglected. Whomever has to follow up, they didn't do anything. And after the second step that they hear, where it was getting a bill from you, as somebody else mentioned here, you just, when we come and talk here, you're just chilling on your phone, and you don't listen what we say, you don't listen what the City of Los Angeles constituents say. It seems like you care less what we think and what we do. The reason why Mr. Torres had this fence is to protect himself from the crime in L.A. I believe for you to penalize someone who have high fence to protect themselves from the crime, the first step that you should do is lower the crime in L.A., and then we can lower the fence, and we don't have, we don't need to have those type of protection. As, as, as an authority of the City of Los Angeles, I assume that you know, I hope that you know, the high crime in L.A. And you don't doing much, but you doing enough to take money from the people package, which is very unfair. We asked Mr. Oferl to postpone this, this option, and we can talk, the family can get together and do what they need to do, to give you the money that you requesting for, for him to protecting himself from the crime with the high fence. Thank you very much, and enjoy your weekend.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh on items 1, 6, 11, and 8. 1, 6, 8, and 11, Mr. Walsh. And we're gonna ask you to please, I'm gonna remind every speaker, stay on subject on those particular items only.
I also signed up for number 7. You want to hold that later. But number 1, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You do a good job. I always say you do a good job when you do a good job. Building is safety does a good job. I'm not one of those, "Ring, ring, ring, gang, you're all a bunch of crooks." I'm not that, I'm here to reform you, to reform you. And number 6, uh, this is REAP. Again, you're doing a good job when it comes to renters. "A bunch of crooks, everything you do is wrong." That's not me. Others can have the freedom to say that. Number, number 7.
Number 7 yet. Number 8 and number 11.
Okay, you're gonna call 7 later. Number 8, this concerns site plans for property. This again is the City of Los Angeles pretty much giving away approval and elder care, unified permit, and site plans for the property here. Walnut Acres Neighborhood Association, this is a decision that Walnut Acres Court Decision 1 versus the City of Los Angeles. Do you ever win anything? You seem to lose every time you, every time we sue you. And number, number 11 relative to the funding of the L.A. Beautification Team. The L.A. Beautification Team, I understand, is now coming out of the Braille Institute, because everybody on the L.A.B.T. is absolutely blind to all the problems in Los Angeles. But the important thing here on this one is it concerns the Hollywood Redevelopment Project area. Now, I got up in 1971, and I said, "I will spit on your grave of the CRA." Everybody laughed, but thanks to Jerry Brown, we destroyed the, it doesn't exist anymore. The money that was going there to the, uh, to the redevelopment, state redevelopment agencies is now going to other agencies, other governmental agencies. How much money so far? $7 billion. We took away from them, and every day is more and more of the money. So I'm not here to say, "Oh, my, no, no." We win, we win, we win, and then after that, we win again. We are, we, and Mike Fuer is the worst City Attorney you ever had. He's bleeding from the rectum, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Wayne? Wayne on items 1, 6, 10, 11, I'm sorry, 9, 10, 11, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Very, very good. First of all, the packed room here knows that number 1 is all a bunch of graph lies and bullshit. You can get all these liens canceled, alls you gotta do is buy your councilman or one of his staffers, or do luck Kevin James and get a P.I. and blackmail your way onto a city job. But democracy, there ain't no goddamn democracy. That's a fucking lie. And that's why all these liens in CD 3 and 13 continue to go on unabated. Folks come down here, nice, normal people coming down here and just asking the councilman, Mitchell Farrell staffer, "Can you help me?" And she said, "No, I can't help you." Why? I don't know. The one with the hood knows why, because I got my councilman to help me with an item on number 1. Now, what you have to do, people, is you gotta come down here, you gotta fill out a card, and then you gotta come up here and check back a person of a jackass. And that's why jackass behavior, jackass liens equals jackass response equals- And that's why jackass behavior, jackass liens equals jackass response equals cancellation of liens. And the rest of this stuff, they all put it all together. Item 6, item 8, item 9, item 10, item 11, item 12. Fuck the fucking Brown Act. So we're gonna put it all together. Item number 6, item number 8, item number 9, item number 10. Like, I'm gonna fucking stay up here and try to talk about it all like I got some fucking itinerary in front of me? I need to be called on each item separately.
Okay, you're not on the subject matter. You're not on the subject matter.
Exactly. What the rules require me to do is I'm staying on items 1, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12. And that's exactly what I'm speaking about. In the aggregate, in the totality, that's the way the city attorney's letting the goddamn thing fall apart. So I'm just following the rules. Just another nigger following the rules. And when you talk about Hollywood redevelopment projects, what you talking about is federal lawsuits, just like what happened the other day with the injunction on homelessness and removal of items from people who are homeless.
We're off topic. You're not on topic, and that was your third warning. That's your third warning. So, thank you. Mr. Dog, Zuma Dog on, please stay on subject if you could, please. I know you know, you're pretty good about that. 1, 6, and 11. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And yes, feel free to warn, but I do try to stay on topic. And we'll start with number 1. Oh, by the way, Rule 93, if I can have a close-up equal to what you people have, you're in violation of the law. Number 1, and we heard people speaking about it, this is the Building and Safety Department, nuisance abatement costs and noncompliance. Now, here's the problem. I want you to release all these properties, and I want you to be very cautious. You know, they call me a critic, a City Hall critic. I don't think I'm a critic. I think that I'm, you know, a concierge. I'm here to provide good information for you. Perhaps you aren't aware, there's an FBI investigation into City Hall over systematic code enforcement, which is this. Now, the inspectors, they get paid per inspection. Can you imagine you're getting paid per inspection that the people that are getting inspected have to pay? That's called a money treadmill, and it's like The Sopranos or any type of mafia corruption. This is true hardcore scary thug corruption. You notice how there's no mafia in L.A. like there is in the East? That's because it's called City Hall. So these thug people come to your house, and they go, "Gee, you know, your hedges are too high. Gee, your fence is a quarter inch too short or too tall. You know, you gotta do this or that." Even if you comply, then they're gonna come back, "Oh, you know, I didn't see that, that, this, and that." Then even if you comply, well, gee, you heard that they don't do anything. You cannot get off this list, and the mistakes are passed down the line. Your property ends up getting seized through administrative errors. "Oh, oh, man, I forgot to flip the page here. Oh, here it says you're guilty. Oh, okay, you complied. I forgot to flip the page too, but, you know, the court order's already in the mail, and you missed the date." Okay, it's Chinatown. It's scary as hell. People are losing their lives, basically. And here's the thing, you know, again, with the critic, I'm here to advise. Here's the thing, counsel, and I am on topic. You're not expected to have to know the detail and complexity of the corruption that's right under your noses. You have districts to run of a host and range of other things. You're getting hit up all the time, and maybe it's about parks or, you know. I've been specializing and focusing on this item, and I'm here to tell you that you know that there is an FBI investigation, because I certainly couldn't come here and say, "Hello, there's an FBI investigation into Building and Safety over the stuff you see in mafia movies." And you, and they would say, "Well, gee, that's not true." So it is true. So my final thing on this topic is advisory. Don't put yourself at risk. Don't put yourself on the hook. I know that you even don't have the power to stop this mafia Chinatown racket. I'm not being disrespectful when I say to some extent the council people are just council puppets of the higher racketeering municipal inertia for decades. You know, these council members, you people come and go. You know, you have your term that's still short compared to the factions of corruption that run this city, that allow and install the council members in office. And council gets to do their things to a certain extent. But, boy, you know, the city's gonna do their thing over here. And so I think to come out of this, what I would advise is you talk to the Building and Safety people. You gotta talk to Garcetti. You say, "You gotta put the kibosh on this for now because it's all over. It's gonna be on dredge report." Imagine when the first City Hall official is dragged out in handcuffs over this stuff. It's so innocuous. "Oh, lean, oh, just a little nuisance abatement, just a little nuisance abatement." And before you know it, you lose your property. "Just a little nuisance abatement. Oh, your hedges are just a little bit too high. This fence is just a quarter inch too short. And before you know it, you lost your house." Can you believe it? I can't believe these people aren't screaming or yelling right now. They can't get this stuff fixed. Okay, I think I covered that topic. So my final advisory is please tell Building and Safety to stop me and mafia racketeering people because a lot of people are gonna get in trouble. And I hope it's not the fine good council members that I love so much. Now, I just blew all my time on that, but it is important. It's the most important thing. So I'm here to reiterate, after 10 years of coming here, I'm here to tell you that the lean and the reap and anything with the Building and Safety, Department of Housing, mafia corruption, and what happened to my mic, y'all? Anyway, come out to Mar Vista Park tomorrow, Saturday at 2:00 P.M. The good Mike Bonin throwing a memorial celebration of life for Bill Rosendahl. Hope to see everybody there. Thank you. Zuma Dog.
On item 1 and 9, Eric Previn on 1 and 9.
It is Eric Previn from the CD 2. Item 1 has caught my attention once again, sir, because we have a, an item that was before you in Van Nuys where a group of number of constituents came down from Hollywood, the properties on Monroe, very upset because in order to protect themselves, they had erected a gate, a small gate. It's a little bit over the code, but nonetheless, this was for protection. Now, over the last several years, they have been harangued. There's a guy in this neighborhood who, all of you, Mr. O'Farrell, I'm pleased to see you finally seated, sir. We were trying to speak to you off to the side, but you were obviously tied up. This guy's name is Edward Hunt Villarreal. I think many of you know him. He's a neighborhood council operative. He went around and tagged 40 residents with notices to have their various issues resolved. So this, of course, smacks of a kind of profiling. I'm sure he's just doing what he thought was the right thing to do. But here we have people who are protecting themselves in an area where there is a lot of crime. We could certainly send somebody from CD 13, one of the deputies down to guard this area overnight, one night, just to see whether or not they feel it's appropriate or not appropriate. But the point I'm trying to make here today is that this group of people and this resident who is a owner, as we've heard many times, Charles and his esteemed colleague here, when we hear it's an owner, we quickly accommodate because that is how we do it in our system of putting liens on properties. But here, we're trying to squeeze these folks for money. And worse, we're trying to potentially charge an additional permit fee in order to keep themselves safe. This is ridiculous. So what I would ask you to do is like with the neighboring property that was mentioned by one of the speakers earlier that you nicely separated me from the pack on, there's a group called Creative Multifamily LLC who were BOE, happily absorbed some of the permit fees. So I would ask Mr. O'Farrell to continue this item, first of all, and then consider possibly some of those alternatives off to the side. I just cannot believe that this has gone this far. I feel great sympathy for these people who are trying to protect their family. I don't know any of the individuals on a personal basis. I came to a meeting. That's what I do from time to time, and this is something that CD 13 needs to get in order. Item number 9 is obviously the great Corretts Blumenfeld motion to, oh, it's not a great motion at all, it's a request to have the Office of Finance occupy the little tippy-top part of the Tom Bradley Tower. This is, of course, perfectly okay. It is going to be in June, not in April, right after Election Day or the primary election. But nonetheless, what the Office of Finance has been engaged in, sir, and I think you know because of when I dragged out the MGA LLC North, that group that you had, "Oh, no, it was a big mistake." They make mistakes, okay? Now, they have made a substantial mistake in their reading, Mr. City Attorney, of the Public Record Act, because in a very serious inquiry about the transit occupancy taxes and the parking occupancy taxes that, of course, are paid by all hotel operators on a regular basis, they simply have refused to disclose whether or not, a well-known scofflaw named Richard Weintraub, who runs the Sportsman's Lodge Hotel, has been paying or not paying. They are saying, "We are not gonna share it." Now, they are, they don't quite understand with whom they're dealing evidently because the public has a right to understand these, this information, especially in light of the failure to pay that preceded the period that we've been asking to see. So I would simply ask the Office of Finance that is being run by one of the nicest city employees I've ever heard speak, Claire Bartels, to simply instruct her team to simply do what is appropriate and in compliance with the law, and release whether or not timely transit occupancy taxes, parking occupancy taxes have been paid. So with that, I would say thank you to CD 13 for if they're gonna consider continuing item 1. Oh, it is so important to be fair to all groups. Thank you.
All right. So that concludes public comment on those items. We're gonna go ahead and open the roll on 1, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 12. 1, 6, 8, 10, 11, and 12. Will please go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Great. Thank you very much. Those are approved. We'll go ahead and open the roll on item 9 now as well. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 7.
Madam President, item 7 is called special for cards.
First speaker on item 7 is Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh confidential tweeting at HollywoodDims. You're taking a position on North Carolina House bill. When I got up here and started talking about a member of the City Council here who was running for supervisor, anybody but Englander, I was talking about Englander. That's not in the purview of the City Council. So when did North Carolina become part of the purview of the City Council? But this is a bathroom bill, and I want the whole world to know, we have the most politically correct bathrooms in America. We want every single transsexual, transvestite, male to female, female to male, to come to L.A., and you can use any damn bathroom you want. In fact, we hear that Mayor Garcetti is going to be taking down, and we want it done very soon because it's very hurtful to transsexual people. The sign that says men and women, restricting people. People should be able to urinate and defecate any damn bathroom they want. Come to L.A. and defecate at City Hall. PCP, L.A. is PCP. That stands for Politically Correct P. Come here and just let loose and know that Yellow Stream is politically correct. Do it in something marked men, something marked women, or maybe you wanna just take the signs down yourself. But they think it's so important, this issue is so important, this City Council is telling North Carolina what to do. Let North Carolina do whatever they want. I lived in North Carolina when I was a child. It's a piece of shit. So let North Carolina piss and shit any fucking way they want to.
Next speaker is Mr. Wayne, followed by Eric Previn and Zuma Dog. Oh, Mr. Zuma Dog, you're out of time. So Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Eric Previn.
Well, I know about North Carolina, a great goddamn state indeed. Now, you're trying to force bigotry in North Carolina. By whom? Two goddamn homos boning an O'Farrell trying to bone over economic pressure and terrorism on the fine people of the Republic of North Carolina, known as the Commonwealth of North Carolina, and these fine southern gentlemen down there. Now, down there in North Carolina, they teach you, number 1, how to be a boy. They don't put you in a goddamn dress because somebody comes home one day and goes, "Toby, beat me, mommy, am I gay?" They don't do that shit down there in North Carolina. They don't want no goddamn guys going into the women's bathrooms down there and raping and accosting women. There's still states in the Union that have a fucking brain, and North Carolina is one of those states. But you guys are gonna use economic terrorism to suppress the right of people in North Carolina to decide how to use public restrooms. Fuck you. That is not the purview of this City Council, Mr. City Attorney, except to engage in economic terrorism against a fucking state. This is a municipal corporation, and this municipal corporation incorporated under the laws of the State of California states that this corporation, the Los Angeles City Charter, shall operate for lawful purposes. This is not a lawful purpose. This is economic terrorism. So tell L.A., fuck L.A. No on the Olympics. Fuck this place and in dirt, in Dattner and Martinez.
Next speaker is Mr. Previn. And sir, I've been notified you have 1 minute left. 7, on item 7.
I appreciate that, Councilmember. There is also item 14, which is in a special meeting, so that will be addressed separately, obviously. Thank you. Okay, item 7, I would like to thank, it's Eric Previn from CD 2, and obviously, I would like to thank Councilmember Bonin and Councilmember O'Farrell and Council President Wesson for this. This is obviously an offensive idea that North Carolina has come up with to restrict various people of the LGBTQ community, and I am vigorously opposed to that. And I am supportive in a way of holding off on the business that the City of Los Angeles conducts with North Carolina until they change their disgusting ways. We also have a ban on work in Arizona that has come in and out of favor, and I am very curious how we permitted the City of Los Angeles to engage in various activities with TASER International, a group that not only has been engaged in, from Arizona, but also have been involved in contributions to various council members.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time is up. Appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Bonin, did you wanna say a few words on this item?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, colleagues. In June of 2015, the U.S. Supreme Court legalized same-sex marriage across the country, and the LGBT community nationwide celebrated, and many of you joined us in those celebrations. That was not the end of a battle by a long shot. Since then, there has been a wave of hatred and bigotry rising up in various cities and states around the country and passing some incredibly heinous anti-LGBT legislation. Two of the worst bills really ever have been passed in the past few weeks. In the state of North Carolina, the legislature passed and the governor signed HB 2, which overturns all state protections for gays and lesbians and puts new discrimination on the books. It actually overturns any LGBT anti-discrimination protection in any city or county throughout the state, and then it mandates new anti-LGBT discrimination. It is particularly hateful to transgender people. The law requires that in schools and public buildings, bathrooms must have a designated sex assignment, and users must use the bathroom corresponding to the sex listed on their birth certificate. You literally, to go into a bathroom, you could be required to show your birth certificate if you do not look sufficiently male or sufficiently female to use that bathroom. In addition to the anti-trans provisions and banning anti-discrimination throughout the state, it also forbids workers to sue the state government for anti-discrimination, not just LGBT. to sue the state government for anti-discrimination. Not just LGBT, any form of discrimination you can no longer sue in state court. It goes even further, and says that local jurisdictions there can't have minimum wage laws or other types of worker protections. They bundled all of that into some of the most hateful legislation that I've seen. This boycott, there's been a nationwide boycott of the state of North Carolina doing business with the government and having official travel there, that has been endorsed by the states of Connecticut, Minnesota, New York, Vermont, and Washington DC, by the cities of Atlanta, and Boston, and Chicago, and Cincinnati, by Dayton, and Honolulu, and Miami, and New York City, by Oakland, and Philadelphia, Portland, and Providence, Salt Lake City, San Francisco, and Santa Fe. It's been joined by the LA Metro, which refused to go to a conference there last week, by the public transportation company in San Francisco, and in Seattle, and by many other places. And the question is, where is Los Angeles? So I'm asking today that we join this boycott, and I'd further ask that we add to that boycott the state of Mississippi, which just a few days after I submitted this motion, passed House Bill 1523, which has been described by the ACLU as the most aggressive and hateful form of anti-LGBT legislation that has ever been passed. It, like North Carolina, bans all local protections. It, under the guise of religious freedom, allows an adoption agency to refuse to place a child with parents who lived together before they were married. It would allow a counselor on a suicide hotline to refuse to take a call or help a young teen who is LGBT. It would allow a car rental company to refuse to rent a car to a gay couple on their honeymoon. It goes so far that it would actually allow a company to fire women for wearing pants to work. And it also would permit reparative therapy, which is the forced conversion therapy for LGBT youth. And it would allow not only parents to force conversion therapy on their children, but it would allow foster parents, who otherwise don't have the right to determine the educational courses that a foster child takes, to conduct that therapy as well. This is state-sanctioned discrimination and state-sanctioned hatred. And when the state sanctions hatred, and when the state endorses discrimination, hatred and discrimination increase. It creates a climate of intolerance and a climate of violence. I guarantee you in these two states that people are going to be fired, and I can guarantee you in these two states that hate crimes are going to increase, and people are going to be beaten, and I can guarantee you in these states that young kids struggling with their identity are going to be bullied, and some of them will ponder suicide. That's not what Los Angeles stands for, and I'd ask that we join the boycott of the state of North Carolina until they repeal HB 2, and I'd amend it to include the state of Mississippi until they repeal House Bill 1523. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and I just want to rise to strongly support this motion, and thank members O'Farrell and Bonin for bringing it forward. I think, members, and to the public Los Angeles, in the United States, we cannot take it seriously enough when racists and bigots get control of the state apparatus and use it to carry out their venom. We cannot react swiftly enough, we cannot react strongly enough, and we cannot react forcefully enough. It is, so much progress has been made in this country, and we risk losing it all if we look the other way when this type of thing goes down. And so, I'm glad to join with the authors and the rest of the members in strongly supporting this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Mr. Coretts?
Thank you, Madam President. This is possibly one of the most reprehensible pieces of legislation ever written. I mean, it's hard to imagine things like turning down someone on a suicide prevention hotline for the very thing that might drive them further in that wrong direction. A few of the things they're making legal, I was proud 30 years ago or so to help write legislation that helped make such things illegal in the city of West Hollywood, where we were on the cutting edge of stopping discrimination. 30-plus years later, we've made so much progress, and yet to go back not only to where we were, but so much worse than we've ever been in that state is just unbelievable. I have to think that most or all of it doesn't survive legally, but having that on the books for six months, or a year, or a few years, I think would just be devastating. So, I thank Mr. Bonin and Mr. O'Farrell for bringing this forward, and we absolutely have to take the strongest stand possible and make it clear that Los Angeles, for one, does not put up with this kind of stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts. Madam Clerk, we have an amendment before us?
Yes, Madam President. There is amendment by Councilmember Bonin to add to the boycott to include the state of Mississippi.
Is that to be seconded by Mr. O'Farrell? Very well. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Item passes. Madam Clerk, let's revisit our regular meeting and go into our special meeting. Fourth with for Mr. Rue.
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sedio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris-Dawson, Weesar, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. 12 members, Madam President, and a quorum.
So now the items 13 and 14 are before us.
Madam President, items 13 and 14 are items for which a public hearing has not been met. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are before us, members. Madam Clerk, do you have any cards on these items?
Madam President, there are cards on 13 and 14.
Members, do we have any specials on 13 and 14? I see none. I'm number 13 first, Mr. Spindler, followed by Mr. Walsh, and Zuma Dog.
Yes. Now we get to the technical shit of the meeting, so. Item 13, the Board of Water and Power Commissioners, also known as the Water Terrorists of Los Angeles, now are getting into bed with UCLA after they flooded UCLA with their broken water mains. Now, they're going to give them optical fibers. Yay! And we need optical fibers, don't we? Yes, optical fibers. Enriched optical fibers and a healthy internet diet. So now, the city administrative officer, Miguel Santana, give him a hand. He's going to rape the university for $163,000 annually, and $1.62 million, there's no impact on the city's fund. Well, isn't this nice? Lease of the DWP's optical fibers. Isn't that wonderful, guys? That a university has to fucking pay for something that should be free, according to Bob Bloomingfield and his information technology bill. I thought we're giving internet free to the whole city. $163,000 fucking dollars from a university? $163,000 a year that could be spent on books, it could be spent on parking, it could be spent on infrastructure, but no, we have to use the DWP to fuck UCLA out of $163,000. Well, I say no, internet should be free. It's a human right in Los Angeles. Vote no, and UCLA, fuck USC.
Mr. Walsh on item 13?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is very complex. It's between UCLA and the DWP. It involves $1,632,480, and this is part of the deal to make UCLA repair all the damage that was caused by the burst water main. It's costing us, through the DWP, over one and a half million dollars. They're not going to talk about it. You know an issue is important when the City Council doesn't talk about it. You know the issue is trivial when the City Council spends an hour on it. This is what we're seeing here, HollywoodHighlands.org. The water mains will continue to bust.
Next speaker, Zuma Dog. Item 13.
Yes, again, Zuma Dog. Called critic by City Hall, I'd like to consider myself an advisor, and I'm taking an advisatory role so that Council doesn't get in trouble. It's being investigated. Now, this is about DWP, Department of Water and Power, and relevant to this, if you saw the movie Mad Max: Water Wars, that really is a true story, that's based on real stuff that's happening. Water is the number-one thing you need to live besides air. Now, you can't do anything to tax the air but the water and power. So this is about a fiber lease. Now, how this works is, if the college, USC, you know, the city goes, we got these fiber optics here, use them, ours, at this price, or else. So it's like Chinatown. Yeah, so the city, I think this is great, the city's being a thug to USC that's making them use these crappy outdated fibers for some contract. It's probably Mitch Englander's Uncle Harvey that does the contract, and then everybody here gets a piece of the pie, and DWP, so yeah, yeah, soak USC, baby, ream them for these outdated crap fibers. First, oh, first, oh, you got to use fibers now. Oh, by the way, these fibers from us at this price, okay? You understand? Watch Chinatown, watch Mad Max, find out what happens. Capisce? Anyway, I'd like to have Council advise this department to cut the mafia tactics, because again, there's an FBI investigation into City Hall. It's so rampant that you could cut the tension in the air, baby. The FBI! Walsher District, all over City Hall, please brush back the corruption a little bit. Zuma Dog, zumadog.com. I'll see everybody at Mar Vista Park tomorrow for the Bill Rosendahl event. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item 14. Zuma Dog, item 14, followed by Mr. Walsh.
Oh, no. Oh, no. I'm caving in under an avalanche of shady corruption today on these agendas. It all seems so innocuous. How do I know this item's shady? It's on the agenda. Okay. Oh, no, Sedio, Fuentes, oh, no. Anyways, for a reserve loan. These guys want to take out a loan. Hold on. Does John Walsh have a card on this? They want to take out a loan for video cameras, body-worn cameras. Oh, $4 million. Who's got the contract for this? Hey, wait a minute. Who decided $4 million that these guys get to pick for the thing? Now, this is terrible. I can't even talk straight right now.
Mr. Zuma Dog, I'm going to sit on the item. I'm going to ask you to sit down.
I tried to. My brain malfunctioned. Item 14, so shady.
Next speaker, Mr. Walsh on item 14, followed by Wayne Spindler.
Always a pleasure to speak in front of you. HollywoodHighlands.org, blogging at Jay Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. There isn't a whole lot of information here. Now, when you, I was speaking to everybody here, when you ask for the sidewalk to be repaired in front of your street, they say, we don't have the money, we're broke. No, no, they're not broke. They have $4.4 million, and the City Reserve Fund that's going to something called BODY, B-O-D-Y, WOM, W-O-M, video cameras. They're not going to tell you what this is for. They're not going to tell you anything. They're just going to vote, 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 and there's no one worse than scumbag Rue, who got elected by saying he was going to vote no on this shit. Authorize a $4.4 million loan. Well, what's the interest? When is that going to be paid back? Rue doesn't give a fucking shit. All he's interested in is his relatives in Korea. HollywoodHighlands.org. Unappropriated balance line item, Reserve Fund, eliminate this thing. Nobody knows what this is, but like a trained pigeon, they will vote for this. And no one gives a shit, including the LA Times, and including the scumbag editorial writer, Robert Green, who is a racist. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, followed by Eric Previn, item 14.
So, another sensitive item requiring a sensitive voice. $4.4 million for NURRI to buy video cameras from a reserve fund. Where'd you get the $4.4 million? There is no $4.4 million, but somebody buried $4.4 million. They stole it, and now they have to put it back into the Treasury, because if they don't put it back in the Treasury, the grand jury will want to know where the $4.4 million is. It's in a reserve fund for what? Body-worn video cameras. Yes, we have to have body-worn video cameras. We don't have enough surveillance in this psychotic, fucking, out-of-control police state that we're living in. You can't just let people work. You just can't let people drive. You can't just pave the fucking sidewalks and let people work. No, you need to have, every fucking person for the city has to have a body-worn video camera. And what are you going to do? Everybody's going to wear a hood like I'm wearing, and surprise, anonymity is back. Anonymous will take your fucking camera system, and on one tablet, shut it down for a fucking year. Did you know that? You have no fucking way to stop the people. They don't want to be fucking videotaped without permission. But you don't want to give people's consent to anything. You want to demand. I demand I record you without your permission, and I demand North Carolina put faggots in their bathrooms. This has to fucking stop!
This has nothing to do with the item, Mr. Spindler.
Stop this fucking city! They're criminals!
That concludes cards on this. I'm sorry, it does not. Mr. Previn, I apologize, you're next. Item 14.
Thank you. It is Eric Previn from the CD 2. This is a loan. It is a loan from a fund that has caught my attention. It's the, let me be very specific, it's the body-worn video cameras, unappropriated balance, entitled line item 580202, entitled Body-Worn Video Cameras. And we're going to be loaning the money to do some good things, I think. It sounded like we're going to be supporting the Family Solution Centers and a few of the other things that are having a little funding gap, so we need to close that gap, and we're taking the money out of the Body-Worn Video Camera Fund. Now, the Body-Worn Video Camera Fund, as you know, is to buy body-worn video cameras, which is a hot subject in America and in Los Angeles, and unfortunately, one of our council members was very close to the group called TASER International. It's Mr. Englander, who I don't know where he stepped off to. But he went down to Arizona and got 12 donations during the procurement. There's a question of what constitutes a procurement, and anyone who's sane knows that they were obviously actively trying to get that giant project that Mr. Bloomingfield, even Mr. Bloomingfield, I should say, had to blanch slightly when he saw that, in addition to the enormous fee for BodyCam videos, was stuck a 4,400 TASER for body cam videos, was stuck a 4,400 TASER order, an order for 4,400 different TASERS. Martinez, come up here and show us the TASER and how big it is. They're very nice. They cost several hundred dollars, but the trick is, they also come with a horrible package of fees and online data costs that raise the cost so very, very high. Now, where the ethics investigation is on that, nobody knows. Where we are at rightsizing and putting out to RFP properly those body cam videos, nobody knows. And yet, the public is clamoring for the use of these instruments, because they are very, very, they make people better citizens, Mr. Bonin, as you know. They are zeitgeisty. People are using them all over the place. You know, in a period when Chicago has let the whole country down by policing--
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you very much. That concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well. So, Madam Clerk, let's adjourn our special meeting and return. Let's return back to our regular meeting.
Madam President, you have, the council has general public comments.
First speaker is Ziggy Rice or Rinse? I can't. Is it K-R-I-S-E?
No, K-R-U.
Oh, K-R-U, I apologize.
Same pronunciation as Tom Cruise, but totally different spelling.
Ziggy Kuns, welcome.
Well, welcome, and thank you again for hearing me. I spoke earlier on the illegal gate closure that happened at London and Dillon. The Bureau of Engineering appears to be under the impression that they have to power to absorb costs in the amount of $5,000. I would like your council to take a very close look at that council file and it becomes, you know, an item on your agenda next week. There is a government code section cited in the council file, which is a vehicle code 21101, and yet 21101.6 tells you that notwithstanding section 21101, local authorities may not place gates or other selective devices on any street which deny or restrict the access of certain members of the public to the street by permitting others unrestricted access to the street. Currently, that gate is not always closed. It closes probably at certain times, so thank you very much. Look into that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. The next speaker is John Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, signed the recall petition for Paul Krikorian. This is not a joke. This is not a joke. It's going around. Hillary and Garcetti, you know, Garcetti hates Bernie Sanders. He's doing everything he can to destroy his career. He's an anti, he's half-anti-Semite, Mr. Garcetti. And Hillary's going to stay at Garcetti's house when she's in town. Anybody but Englander? Do you see Englander here for supervisor? No, because he's been given permission to go out and raise money when he should be here. He has the worst attendance record of all. Remember, the bathrooms are open here. Go to any bathroom you want, defecate, urinate, do anything you want. Schwarzenegger got, let murderer, but, see, he was allowed to be a murderer, Esteban Nunez, because he killed an Asian. You're allowed to kill Asians in this city.
Next speaker is Wayne Spindler, followed by Eric Previn.
Shout out to CD2. If you live in CD2, sign the petition to recall Paul Krikorian. Make sure you sign the petitions. You only have till the end of July. We need 18,000 signatures. You do it, he's gone, out on the fucking street. You in CD2 have the power of the pen. Sign those petitions and get rid of this scumbag, and then we'll get rid of the other 14 scumbags, but we'll start with one. We got his ass. 18,000 signatures, $5 a signature. Come on, somebody from CBS Studios, you love us. Put up the money, get the signature gathers, get this piece of shit out of this council. Get him out. Recall Paul Krikorian. Recall Paul Krikorian!
The next speaker is Eric Previn, followed by Zuma Dog.
Thank you, Council President Martinez. It is Eric Previn from CD2, and I have a proposal. As Kate Mather of the LA Times wrote a very good article, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Blumenfeld, you're having a little sub-conversation. I don't think that's appropriate. But nonetheless, the article was about the use of TASERS, and unfortunately, they've been dysfunctional. The inventory is down. So, as we all heard in my previous comment, Mr. Buscagino, I know you're a fan of the instrument, there were 4,400 that had been kind of put on the table to go along with the body cam video package that were then taken off quickly and everyone's kind of revived. Now, we're coming back and trying to justify the use of TASERS. But I want this body, who are esteemed and respected, like Mr. Harris-Dawson, who's reminding us of our civil rights on a regular basis. The Fourth District Court of Appeal, Mr. Krikorian, made a substantial ruling, a very important ruling, where they found that some uses of TASER are unconstitutional. So this is bad news for the group, but nonetheless, we're still going to struggle on it as a useful tool if used appropriately. It is not appropriate to use among the mentally ill. The homeless population in Los Angeles is largely mentally ill. Please do not order 4,400 brand-new TASERS, even your own LAPD don't want to do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Previn. The next speaker is Zuma Dog, followed by Jacqueline Richardson.
Thank you, City Council. Zuma Dog, Z-U-M-A-D-O-G-G, ZumaDog.com. Now, we have a very special event coming up tomorrow, and I've got a lot of corruption I wanted to talk about today, but it's going to get a pass in the name and spirit of Bill Rosendahl. I want everybody listening on TV 35 to know there's a major event tomorrow in Mar Vista. It's a celebration of life, Bill Rosendahl, and I'd like to thank Mike Bonin so much for organizing it. The LA Mayor, Eric Garcetti, will be giving a eulogy for Bill tomorrow. Mike was so generous and kind, and again, I'm thanking him, because he's going to let Zuma Dog give a little two-minute public comment tribute to Bill at the event, which truly is in the spirit, because we know I've hit you guys up hard, and on the 10-year anniversary, it's sure fitting. And think how happy Bill would be to know that we are all enjoying each other in a good spirit and all this is doing for us. Please see us tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next last speaker is Jacqueline Richardson.
The statistics are that one half of the people in the United States today are on food stamps, likenesses. These likenesses can be used in war to kill people. Any side could have them, these things to kill the other side. These things or likenesses need to be registered at least once a year at $10 a fee to find out who the owner is, their name and address in case of emergency. Also needed are the intent of its use, fingerprints, DNA, eye prints. Then they also need to contact OSHA for occupational hazards. Obama has at least six of these or more of these likenesses. How are they used? Does Air Force One drop off, six of them, one in each city, for speeches for Obama? White House security knows. When Obama's no longer in office, what will his likenesses be used for? Will they be used to--
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred.
Madam President, that clears the desk.
Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam President. As Mr. Dog indicated, we will be having a celebration. It'll be called Great, 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 a Celebration of the Life of Bill Rosendahl, tomorrow from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Mar Vista Park, 11430 Woodbine Street. It'll be followed from 4:00 to 6:00 by a reception. There will be food, there will be music, there will be art, there will be poetry, there will be performances by the New Directions Veterans Choir and the Trans Choir of Los Angeles. There will be a eulogy by Mayor Garcetti, and then there will be half a dozen or so speakers who will speak for two or three minutes and talk about how Bill Rosendahl impacted their life, including Zuma Dog. It'll be a very Rosendahl-style celebration, kid-friendly, dress is casual, there'll be a petting zoo for the kids as well, so everybody is welcome. That's 2:00 to 4:00 tomorrow at Mar Vista Park. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Are there any other announcements, Members? Seeing none, can we all please rise for adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions to my right? Seeing none. Mr. Bonin? I'm sorry, not Mr. Bonin, Mr. Buscagino.
It's okay. Colleagues, I said we adjourn in memory of Florence Collins, lived in San Pedro her entire lifetime, 102 years old, mother-in-law to Steve Kleingen, who's a champion for us in San Pedro through his nonprofit Clean San Pedro. She was, Ms. Collins was born on Ninth Street, where Harbor Interfaith lies today. She graduated first in her class at Dana Junior High School and left school immediately after to care for her ailing mother while her father was away fishing. She met her husband while he was stationed in the Pacific Fleet, the Navy, as a Navy Chief Officer in San Pedro, who was ultimately transferred to Pearl Harbor with the Pacific Fleet and served on the USS Virginia. Ms. Collins is survived by her children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Have a great weekend.